Mr. Nardone, can you call us to order?
Call the line.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I apologize for this. I was just reflecting when we were designing this school years ago how much we wanted this to be a community space to accommodate many different uses, and that was the case tonight. We just had to do a little deconstruction, so I apologize for that. So, hi once again. My name is Chris Nixon. I'm one of your school committee members in Winchester, and I'm also a member of the EFPBC. Pleased that you're here to, on our community kickoff day for the new Lynch project, to learn about this exciting project and the first steps that we're taking. I'm going to take just a few moments to go through some quick introductions. Our goal tonight is to tell you a little bit about the history, how did we get here, what are we doing today in the short term, what are our goals as a part of the feasibility study process with the MSBA, and what are our long-term goals towards the future, which is an exciting new Lynch school by the fall of '25. Also, what we're going to try to do today, we did this presentation at Town Hall in the auditorium at nine o'clock. We used the full two-hour block. Not really for us talking, we wanted to hear from audience members. We had a little under thirty people maybe show up. We're really eager to hear from you all tonight with some open-mic time. What are some things that you think are going to be essential for a successful Lynch project? What are your concerns? What questions do you have? You've got the full team here tonight, so we're eager to hear from you. So with that, I mentioned the EFPBC. So what is that alphabet soup? It is the Educational Facilities Planning and Building Committee. We are essentially a standing school building committee created by Town Meeting about twenty years ago. We've not all been on twenty years, but Jay almost has. So an appointed committee, we've got architects, engineers, contractors, we've got developers, we have attorneys with experience in design and construction. And for many years, this committee has really served Winchester well, managing all of our major school projects, not just those independently, but we do play a role on the MSBA projects, including this one, VO, and at Lynch, although as you'll see in a moment, we have some other team members with us tonight. We have Hill International. When you partner with the MSBA on a project, we're required to bring in an outside owner's project manager. The Hill team is very experienced, not just with school projects in general, but with working with the MSBA. And so I'm pleased tonight to have Vivian Varbedian down here in the front row. You stand up and wave. She's the project director. And next to Vivian is Andy Voe. He is our project manager. They've been with us for a few months in Module Two as we've been building the team. We also have with us tonight our representatives from Tape Architects, Charlie Hay and Chris Blessen down in front. Tape were the architects of the Ambrose School and Vincent Owen. So they bring a lot of experience to elementary education design as well. And the EFPBC just executed the contract with Tape on November 3rd, so literally we've just gotten the team together. I mentioned the MSBA as a partner. So this is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They exist under the auspices of the state treasurer. One percent of every sales tax dollar in the Commonwealth goes to the MSBA, so think about a penny for every sales tax dollar. They collect these funds, and then they look to partner with districts. There are around three hundred school districts in the Commonwealth. They're interested in partnering with districts to help fund school projects that meet certain criteria, which you'll hear about in the presentation. We've worked with the MSBA before, and we're excited to be working with them on the Lynch project. And then our last and not least, most important community member is you all. Even though the Lynch project is a neighborhood community school, the project will not happen unless we get the buy-in and support of the entire town. We did that here with Winchester High School, and years prior, we did it with the Vincent Owen Elementary School. So we certainly are eager to get your input tonight. So, very quickly, for those who are, pardon me, for those who are familiar with this slide from Town Meeting, this will be familiar to you, but for those who aren't, you may rec, some of you will be familiar with the five-year goal set forth in our school district's ten-year school facilities master plan. We accomplished Phase One and Phase Two of the McCall addition recently, on budget and on schedule. However, our two largest and most ambitious projects, of course, are the replacement of the Lynch and the Morocco Elementary Schools. And as we all know, building systems and components do not last indefinitely. We have about $32 million of renewal and replacement costs at the Lynch that we have today, and nearly $20 million at Morocco. We don't have these kinds of resources in Winchester in our stabilization funds, and even if we did, the school committee prefers the wholesale replacement or reconstruction of these schools, given the compounding restrictions of their designs, their age, and some of the space constraints. So, in the spring of 2017, with our ten-year facilities master plan and final draft form, your school committee, with the support of the Select Board, jointly made a strategic decision to seek partnership with the state school building authority for replacement of both the Morocco and Lynch Elementary Schools. Our application to the MSBA was a time-intensive and competitive process, with between sixty to ninety projects submitted by districts each year, and sometimes fewer than ten making the cut, for invitation into the pre-schematic eligibility phase of the core replacement program. The MSBA partners with communities to support the design and construction of educationally appropriate, flexible, sustainable, and cost-effective educational facilities. So you can quickly tell then that the big appeal of partnership with the MSBA is, in fact, a financial one, as districts receive substantial reimbursements for every project cost invoice, including those associated with the feasibility study that we're kicking off today. Our recent experience with the MSBA on two major projects underscores this point. We were pleased to receive almost a forty percent reimbursement on the VO school, which opened in 2013 in partnership with the MSBA. And then subsequently, following the reconstruction and expansion of this Winchester High School, we had a grant of almost $44 million. It was over forty percent reimbursement. In both of these instances, the participation with the MSBA directly lowered our net project costs, and that means less borrowing that we see in our tax bills. The EFPBC, our standing school building committee, played a role in oversight of both of these projects, in addition with the OPM, on behalf of Winchester. And I mentioned it's a very diverse committee, so they really bring their skill sets to the project. And as I mentioned a moment ago, we're excited to have Hill onboard to bring their expertise as well. So when the MSBA partners with the school district, it's because the board finds the project eligible and a priority over many other submittals that they receive, based on an evaluation of specific criteria published in their SOI Statement of Interest process. In our instance with Lynch, the school committee and Select Board identified three eligible criteria for consideration, and for Morocco as well. And that was first existing enrollment and overcrowding, future space constraints and impact associated with additional enrollment growth, and then third, the existing physical plant's age, configuration, and condition. So the school committee opted in 2017 to submit statements of interest to the MSBA. We did this jointly with the Select Board for both the Morocco and Lynch Elementary Schools. And having recently completed this project, they turned us down. Sort of expected that. We tried again in 2018, at which time the MSBA sent their senior study team to Lynch, and the executive director paid a personal visit to Morocco. Still, though, we didn't get an invitation. So after our third attempt, the district was notified in December of 2019 of the Lynch School's invitation into the eligibility period with the MSBA's core replacement program. This lengthy pre-schematic phase began officially in April of '20. It involved a more thorough documentation of the project's needs, existing physical plant, enrollment information, Winchester's latest housing statistics, and some early educational programming assumptions. We were very fortunate for Lynch to have been selected. In the 2019 cycle, sixty-one statements of interest from fifty-one districts were submitted for consideration for the core replacement program. Only eleven made the shortlist, five of them elementary schools. In addition to the lengthy and time-intensive due diligence process required in the eligibility period, the MSBA also requires towns to authorize funding for the next step of the partnership, the feasibility study, which really starts this week. Winchester Town Meeting authorized funding for the feasibility study in the spring of 2020. With funding secured and the project vetting completed by last December, the MSBA board then voted in February of '21 to invite us into the feasibility study. So we took a step, if you will, from eligibility into feasibility. We developed an RFP for the project management team in the winter, and by late spring, we had selected Hill International to join the team as project OPM. And then following this, our summer was busy, developing the RFP for the architectural and engineering team for the project. The MSBA received ten submittals from very strong firms, narrowed the list of finalists down to three in October. And we're pleased that the team from Tape was ultimately selected by the designer selection panel at the MSBA for the project. We've had a really good working relationship with Tape. They are familiar with Winchester. We're familiar with them. I mentioned they are the architects of the Ambrose and Vincent Owen Elementary Schools. The latter a perfect example of a successful MSBA partnership. So here we are now poised to generate some exciting ideas as we envision a new Lynch Elementary School. In the feasibility phase, the MSBA requires us to evaluate many different options for the new Lynch, each one responsive to the many unique challenges that the Lynch site presents us today. Folks who live up near VO, near Johnson Ridge, will recognize these slides perhaps. Here are some of a few examples of what the feasibility study generated on the VO project a decade ago. The team developed renovation and addition options, as seen on the left. Some new build options into the Hill on the right. That image on the right looks familiar. It's very similar to what we actually built. We also looked at other options, adapting to the challenges and opportunity of the site's topography and setback requirements. This early exploration phase will help us define the need for swing space for Lynch construction, just as it did for VO a decade ago. So with the preferred development program established by this January, the design team will engage with the Lynch community to study and develop multiple options, and by March, we will have selected a preferred schematic design to submit to the MSBA board for approval. And with this approval in hand, the team will further develop the preferred option as a basis for the project funding agreement. And this will require Town Meeting approval, basically a year from now. We just wrapped up Fall Town Meeting last night at 11:00. A year from now, Town Meeting, we hope, will have approved the project funding agreement. And then subsequently, it will go out for a townwide dead-exclusion vote at the polls, we estimate, by January of '23. And it's these two votes that will ultimately fund construction of the new Lynch Elementary School, with an anticipated opening the fall of '25. I was going to pause tonight just for a moment and share with you that, although we don't have it live yet, we will have a project website, just as we did for the recent McCall Expansion Project. And if time permits and folks are interested, I'm happy to bring that up, but I think I'll save that for the Q&amp;A, so we don't take up more airtime. You can expect to see an announcement from us in the next week or two, and that will include an email where you all can send questions that you have on the project. We'll take those questions. We'll post answers on the website. And again, we're happy to get into that with you later tonight if you'd like to see some examples of what that looks like. So before we hear from our project OPM and the team from Tape, I'd like to introduce Winchester's new interim superintendent of schools, Dr. Frank Hackett, to share some thoughts on the work ahead, beyond his experience as a district leader both in and out of Massachusetts. Dr. Hackett brings to us in Winchester a wealth of experience, working with the MSBA on core replacement projects, and we're pleased that he's joined us at this most important time. I'm really pleased that Dr. Hackett can be here with us tonight. The school committee, as I think many of you know, we've now been meeting in person for a while. We see Dr. Hackett pretty regularly. Many of, in the community, haven't had that opportunity. So, Dr. Hackett, you want to come up and make a few remarks before we hand it off to Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Good evening, everybody. As Mr. Nixon said, I've had some experience with working with the MSBA, most recently in the position that I left, with core projects. I've actually had experience working with Hill International. They are a fantastic group. I think that the team that's been put together with Tape and Hill International is a strong one. I think that you can look forward to a project that will be responsive to what you, as a community, want to see for our kids, and certainly responsive to what we want to see for our kids from an educational perspective. So, I am thrilled to be here. I didn't have to take apart the stage, so I've got to, because we are running a little bit behind, so I just want to make sure that we get through the main part of the presentation. But tonight is an opportunity, I think, for you to see kind of where we are in the process. There's a lot more work to be done. There'll be a lot more opportunities for public input along the way. So this is not a one-shot deal. You'll be hearing from us again. You'll be seeing and having an opportunity to give us some input along the way. So, thank you for coming. It's good to see you.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. I have a hard time staying just in front of the mic, but I will do my very best.
I'll do that, so they'll hear you at home.
I know. They'll hear me at home. So, thank you very much for coming out tonight. As both Dr. Hackett and Mr. Nixon alluded to, this is our kickoff project. With that, we want to make sure that we give you all the necessary information that we have to share. Granted, the project has just now officially been kicked off, and with it, this is our opportunity to hear from you. We want to make sure we take a moment to listen and to hear what it is that this community wishes to have as part of this project. Ultimately, this is a project that is for you. It's for your kids, it's for your students, and it's for your community. We want to make sure that we hear from you, learn from you, and definitely make every attempt to incorporate what is the utmost priority for you. I can't promise that everything will be included, but I can promise that every step of the way, we will take opportunities to come back to the community, to definitely present to you what our findings have been, and give you the options in order to make an educated decision. I'd like to invite Tape first to kind of walk us through what are the next steps, since they will be doing the bulk of the work. So, Charlie, thank you.
Hi, Charlie Hay from Tape. Nice to see all of you this evening. Very briefly, this is, I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing in the next, say, four months. Is it ever done, stay up? It kind of stays up. The next four months, which, so, in terms of process, the MSBA is very prescriptive in what they expect us to do. We have to follow a kind of step-by-step rulebook relative to how we submit materials to them. And we will begin the process with what is called the Preliminary Design Program, and that's essentially a fact-finding component to the feasibility study. So during December, during January, there will be a lot of existing conditions verification going on. There will be field work going on, where we do test borings. For those of you who live near the site, you may see a boring rig out there. You may see surveyors wearing orange vests surveying. You may see traffic engineers, as soon as tomorrow, out counting cars. And what the MSBA expects us to do at the end of the Preliminary Design Program, or PDP, is to submit a fairly robust existing conditions report. The other big piece of this early stage is the district's, what is called the District's Educational Plan, which is kind of an educational vision. And that will be a document that is really the guidebook for both the design team, the community, and the MSBA. And the MSBA really uses that as a touchstone to make sure that the project follows the vision of the district. That will include visioning sessions that are going to probably take place in December. And then the third component of this early stage is really a space temp, what is called a space template, which is really a list of rooms. And that's really the other touchstone for the project, because we will be then designing something around that. So by the end of PDP, we will be submitting very, very preliminary options, as well as those existing conditions reports. The preferred schematic report, the PSR, will follow that. And the PSR is pivoted somewhat to a much more of a focus on what the options are available to the community for a school project. The MSBA's expectation is that we will, at bare minimum, look at a straight renovation, just renovate the Lynch, that we will look at a renovation addition to the Lynch, and that we will look at a replacement to the Lynch on the same site. Those will be the three options. However, there are often many more options than that that, you know, are still under that sort of criteria, but at bare minimum, that's what we're expected to do. The building committee, along with the community, and will be then narrowing down the preferred option. And at the end of the PSR, we are going to be advancing to the MSBA a preferred approach. It won't be a fully-designed building. It won't have detailed cost estimates, but it will be the approach that we will then proceed with into schematic design. So by March, we're going to be submitting a preferred option to the MSBA, that we will then proceed into schematic design, which will get us, as Chris described, to a Fall Town Meeting. So that's really the process moving forward. I'm not going to go through, I think I've mentioned all of this in some detail at this point. I won't go further into it, but this is kind of a list of things that we will be pursuing. We will be giving a detailed look at the site. We're aware that this is a unique site. It is really connected to a lot of work the town has already done around hydrology, flood control, drainage, those kind of topics, because of its location next to Horn Pond Brook. We have some significant regulatory challenges at this site that many of you are probably familiar with, that will be part of this early stage of analysis, to figure out what is really a buildable part of the site and what is not. And that will kind of narrow down what our choices are. There's no doubt that there are constraints. However, sometimes constraints bring some clarity to the process. There aren't too many choices. This is kind of a section through the site, and obviously, where the Lynch is now is kind of the most upland part of the site, and by the time you get out to the soccer fields, it's really become a floodplain. So, that's really going to inform the discussions. So far, the, sort of, our instinct is that we are going to be building somewhere, either, obviously if it's an addition, at the Lynch, if it's a replacement, very possibly near the Lynch. So that will be all part of this initial process. With that, I mentioned the educational visioning. I'm going to ask my partner, Chris Blessen, to talk about visioning, which is a really important part of this early stage, developing an educational plan and a vision for the project. Chris is terrific at doing this. He's done it on a lot of schools.
All right. Good evening. I'm Chris, and my role, as Charlie said, on these projects is really to help launch the visioning and kind of dreaming of the building, to get a good sense of where we need to go and marry these pedagogical thinking of how we do school, how students learn, how teachers teach, with the spaces that support that in the best way that we can. This visioning session really takes a lot of, a lot of work to get stakeholder groups and students and teachers all together, so that we're hearing multiple voices in the rooms, to develop all these things around the design patterns and guiding principles, the community feedback, and then how we message that back to you all to say, to tell you what we've heard. Really kind of, the educational visioning sessions start to develop a story. And so we want to find out what that story of Lynch is, what the story of Winchester is, and encapsulate that into a building. We have a partner consultant, the New Vista Design, David Stephen, who helps us do some of that stuff, and he's excited to get going as well. One of the key components to that is a concept around universal design for learning. And really, what we're talking about there is just making sure that we take a good, long, hard look at making sure we're making, building spaces that are equitable for everyone. And that goes through the gamut of accessibilities, but also learning styles, and making sure that we're making a learning environment that is diverse in its response to the human people that inhabit it. So, there's a lot in that, but the idea that we can make a place that's universal, both accessible and the learning side of it, learning that, the learning has changed a lot in the last twenty months especially, but in the 21st century, it's gained a lot of different aspects that we want to make sure we vision with you to learn what's appropriate for this school in this context. One of the things that's fun about Winchester that you don't get in every community is the outdoor connections here. There's a lot of, there's a lot of that. And I think that we want to build on that. The Lynch School is in a place that has a lot of natural beauty to it. We learned this morning that potentially there's some of the oldest trees in the town in that area. So we want to, we want to try to capture some of these unique aspects of the site and this town, and bring that into the building by making outdoor learning accessible to the students, and connecting them with nature, both in terms of physically connecting them, but also giving them views to daylight and views to the nature outside the building. Multiple studies around how that improves outcomes in learning, so. And then we want to make sure that we're doing a good job with the sustainability side of it. And this doesn't have to be a mystery. This doesn't have to be something more complicated than it really is. Sustainability is super important, both in terms of how we look at energy use in the building, but also the sustainability of maintenance materials, and how we can keep the building looking as good many years down the road as it does in the first day that it's open. So that's durable materials and easily maintained, but also the lifecycle cost of those. How long do you get out of these systems before you might need to replace them? And just really collaborating with facilities, it just so happens tomorrow, I'm giving a talk at the Mass Facilities Association about designing schools to have maintenance in mind from the beginning. So, that'll be a good, a good thing that we focus on with these sustainability points. And just as another term, I think we're trying to get people oriented to some terms, but the sustainability side, you'll hear us talk about EUIs, and that's the energy use intensity of a building, and what we can do to reduce the EUIs, talk about the return on investment for those moves, and how that plays into the sustainability picture, the broader sustainability picture. So, I think there's a lot there, but any questions that you have about those aspects, we'll be happy to address them at the end. But I'll turn it back over to Vivian to talk about community engagement.
Thank you, everyone. And as I mentioned, this is all about your community. We want to make sure that we hear your opinions, your ideas, and please feel free to share it with us, because ultimately, this is your school. We have a multitude avenues of sharing information with you. You learned already from Mr. Chris Nixon that a website will be forthcoming, as well as an email address where you can share your information, your questions, your comments, feedbacks. We appreciate all of it, and it will help define the information that goes into our website as well. But ultimately, what we want to do is we want to be present. We're looking to hear from you tonight, and not just tonight. It doesn't end here. We will be engaging the community on multiple levels and on multiple opportunities to hear from you and present our findings and our project every step of the way. We also want to pay attention to all the little things and work with you to build a consensus. How does that happen? First and foremost, we have these meetings. We listen to you. We listen. We plan accordingly. We start making presentations back to you to make sure we heard what it is that you deem to be priority for you and important. From that, we'll take it again. We'll refine the plans and come back and present. This will become a cycle that you will get used to, and more often than not, even get tired of. We also want to make sure that we present it in a way that appeals to all of the project, not just the educational vision. So as you heard earlier, there will be options that we'll have to review as part of the MSBA submission package. And some of these options will be in, you know, whether it is a renovation, renovation addition, or new build. So Option A might be renovation, whereas Option E might be a completely different type of a new build. And we'll make sure to look at it in essence as far as what, how is it oriented on the site? Does it meet the educational vision that is set forth by the superintendent and his administrative team, and the learning necessary for the school? Because first and foremost, this is an educational building. We also want to take into consideration the traffic. Everybody knows there's always traffic. There will always be traffic. But we want to help mitigate and minimize the impact it has, not only for the drop-off and pickup locations on the site, but as well as for the neighboring community, as the queue lines get a little bit longer. We also want to make sure we're paying attention to the phasing and the disruption. Depending on which option is selected, we'll also take into consideration the various options and opportunities we have for swing space, and how to minimize the impact it has for the learning environment, as well as sustainability. We also want to make sure we're paying attention to the phasing and the disruption. Depending on which option is selected, we'll also take into consideration the various options and opportunities we have for swing space and how to minimize the impact it has for the learning environment as well as sustainability. Now, we want to hear from you. We don't want it to be a moment where we constantly are presenting. This is your opportunity to tell us. Please feel free to come up to the microphone and share with us what you feel is most important that we make sure we incorporate as part of this project. Don't be shy. Please.
Well, thank you so much. My name is Brian Vernalia. My kids are no longer in elementary school, so they're now in high school and graduated. So this is for the next generation, but it's so happy this project is moving forward. And I'm, I'm thrilled that we're here tonight. I have a couple of comments here. It looks like a lot, but it's not really a lot. There's sort of two aspects to a successful project, and that would be a successful construction project and a successful school. And you could imagine that the construction could go very smoothly, but we could end up with the school, not the school we want. Likewise, you could imagine construction would be very disruptive or not going to go the way you wanted, but the school could be great in the end. So I sort of want to take them one at a time quickly. So imagining a successful construction project, you know, aside from being on time and on budget, I feel like that's sort of what we would expect in a successful construction project. I have a couple of other things I'd like to add that, that I feel are important for a successful construction project. The main one would be to have no need for swing space as it's educationally disruptive and costly. And capitally, I don't know if that's a word, capitally and operationally, neither is reimbursable, and they have no long-term value. So I hope when you're looking at this, you will look at potentially how to build this on the Lynch site and the ball fields that we already have. There's town land there too that could be used. Look at other sites, McDonald Field, Leonard Field, less convenient, but I hope you'll examine them. And lastly, I hope you'll consider building up. Most of our buildings in town are not one-story, they're not two-stories, they're three stories or more, most of them. If we build up, we can build in a smaller space and potentially avoid the need for swing space. So that's the first. The second is that I would hope that we'd have, for a successful construction project, our most destructive construction would be during summer and vacation so that the students who are on site have the least amount of disruption while they're there. And then third, as far as successful construction, where possible, I'm an engineer by training. I would love to have the kids in the school be able to, from a distance, engage in the construction project. That would be to say, have some of the engineers come over and talk to them about the phases of what's going on, have them have windows into what's happening in the fence so it's not all blocked off. This is going to be something that there's going to be their school and they can learn a lot. We might have future engineers from watching this happen. So those sort of are three things, these are just three things I thought of, there's probably more as far as a successful construction project. Now for a successful school, aside from sort of a lot of, there's so many things to think about, you know, obviously a facility that fosters sort of the educational experience that, that we want for a 21st century school, there's sort of some other aspects. There's a green school. You talked to some about it, did it metaphorically? We want our school to be green. We want it to have either a solar roof or be truly solar ready. And if that means that we need to have a railing that's up on top for OSHA, we went through this on other schools, let's prepare for having the roof be green. It costs a lot more to come back later on and retrofit the school to make it the way we want it, so let's do what we can. But same time, we'd like the school to be green, literally. That would be green space, outdoor space. You, you talked about a lot of these things, but I just want to sort of say that I think they seem valuable to our community as well. I think something important that you, I think you alluded to, but this building may last for us for 60 years. So it needs to be, I hate the word future-proof, but it needs to be able to adapt because no doubt we won't need the school to look quite the same way it does when we build it 50 or 60 years from now. And last but not least, it's sort of nebulous, but you guys have been building. What have we learned from COVID? What are features in a building that we wish we had for the past 24 months? And how can we incorporate them in a new building? God willing, we won't have another pandemic, but this building's going to last 60 years. And we would just like to be ready for that. So those are just some thoughts, and I really appreciate your taking our feedback tonight.
So before you leave, I want to make sure that we heard you correctly because we're going to be jotting down some of the ideas so that we keep in mind and we use them as a platform for us to plan. I heard sustainability. I heard connection to nature. I also heard flexible spaces and adaptive spaces. I also heard where the school is a learning tool and not just a school, it becomes a learning environment. I also thought I heard something about sustainability as well for the green spaces, not just outdoors, but net zero ready, if not net zero already. Am I missing anything?
I really think a priority should be to, to minimize or not need swing space.
That's the one, I apologize, but yes, swing space. So looking at planning the site and where we physically place the building in relation to it, do you, for you, is a successful building meaning that we would have no need for swing space or it would be a swing space that is not modular?
I would say a successful construction, again, not the building, but the construction project would be one that either had all of the kids from the schools together somewhere else or allowed them to all stay there together and didn't cause kids to have to be scattered around town for as much as two years. So that's what I would think.
Perfect. Thank you so much for sharing it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else? We really would love to hear from you guys. What is it that is a priority to you? What are some of your concerns? And it doesn't have to be anything comments, you could even ask questions. Don't be shy. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Julia Aquino. I have three kids, two are in Lynch right now and one who's at McCall. So excited to see this. I think community members have been really excited, particularly those of us who are at Lynch, to see these plans. So, so glad you're here. I think the concern I have, I live right near Lynch, so traffic is always a concern. I see that you guys are thinking about that and doing traffic studies around Lynch. I wonder if you would go look at the schools you've done already, Ambrose and Vincent Owen, and sort of see what you had planned previously and where that may be less successful. I think we all see lines of cars outside those schools, so potential for improvement even on what's been done before. And I guess the question I have thinking about swing spaces, I know you're in preliminary design, but just as someone who's got a current first grader and would potentially have a child moved all over the place or in a swing space or whatever, is there any information you can give us about what this timeline would look like and what potentially could happen to our kids who are currently at Lynch?
So the, I could, I heard a couple of things. So first and foremost is the traffic concerns, and we'll definitely address that in a moment. I believe that Mr. Nixon might have a little bit more input in regards to that. For the timeline, we are currently just at the preliminary stages, so we're looking to see what options we do have for swing spaces. We're not necessarily ready to share at the moment, but rest assured that as we develop the plans, we will definitely come back to the community. The swing space will not be needed for some time, so it is not imminent. It is not in the next year. It probably will be maybe in the year and a half to almost a little bit over. But regardless, as soon as we start developing them, because we are thinking about them now, we'll definitely be sharing with the community and especially the student population and the parents at Lynch Elementary School. And Mr. Nixon, I think you could be better suited to address the traffic concerns.
I apologize, I'm slow with a limp tonight. This was a good question. Came up this morning as well, to some extent, at Town Hall. I actually want to give, is Mike Betancourt still here? Where did he go? Mike's back there. Mike's a member of the Select Board. He's also a VO district parent. We really like to think we learn from our experiences on projects. Long ago, when we did VO, there was an immediate interest in putting a traffic light at Johnson and Ridge Road. There was none. It's one of the most dangerous intersections we had in Winchester. Our philosophy was we're approximately doubling the number of kids there, so more drop off, more pickup buses made sense to put up a traffic light. The MSBA is just so kind of rigorous in terms of what does and does not qualify for project scope. They turned us down. They said, "Traffic light, no, that falls outside the scope, we're not going to pay for that." So I give Mike a lot of credit because he was one of the fellows who really kind of pushed to, to get that started, but that was very sort of site-specific. What Mike and his peers at the Select Board did subsequently is they said, anytime we kind of take on a major school building project that's really associated with enrollment growth, which the Lynch is, this will be a much larger building than what's there today, the Select Board voted a policy to also establish some funding for traffic, basically traffic studies and some proposals that, that fall, let's say, adjacent to the project, but may not be literally associated with the project. And the best example of this is what you've all seen happen in front of McCall Middle School. So, you know, we did the Phase One, Phase Two addition recently. Think about how the whole configuration, Main Street, Washington has been reconfigured, the narrowing of Mystic Valley Parkway, which slows speed. So that's a traffic calming measure. I'm there frequently, I think it's much safer for the kids. So that's a perfect example, I think, of where there's been some leadership elsewhere in town to say, "We need to set aside money for this." Having said that, I go back to the VO example. I, I have no expectation that the rules have changed at the MSBA in terms of what they're willing to consider a project cost. So if the new Lynch is something that would, would drive us to sort of look at traffic impact, let's say, three, four, or five blocks away, and that may well be something that's appropriate for us to do, that may not be considered part of the project's scope. But I'm quite sure Mr. Betancourt and his peers will be creative about, you know, where we can find the funding to do that important work. So the Lynch project is super important, but we absolutely are going to take a step back and see what kind of impact that has on the broader neighborhood.
What to you is defined as a successful project? Please.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Mooney. I have a first grader at Lynch and I have a three-year-old who will be going to Lynch. I think for me, the most important thing to keep in mind is we're doing this project, and I'm super excited about it, it's wonderful and it really needs to be done, but we're doing this project with kids who are coming off an extraordinarily disruptive period of education. My first grader was by herself doing Zoom school last year. You know, we have a pack of kids who are a little bit behind, who are figuring out how to interact socially for the first time. And so I'm really worried about sort of the disruption and the swing space and moving kids all over the district and not being together. And I recognize there's probably, something's going to have to be done. There are a lot of kids who need to go somewhere, I get that. But I think anything you guys who have done this before and have more expertise than I in figuring out how to minimize that disruption would be really welcome, particularly because we're dealing with a cohort that is coming off an extraordinarily disruptive educational period. So I would just, that's, that's the most important thing to me, to minimize the disruption for kids who have already been disrupted.
Thank you. Anybody else?
You can also dispel rumors if anybody has been doing this.
Yeah. Sir?
I would just, two questions. One is considerations on HVAC filtration, just with the whole COVID thing, which I'm sure you've gotten questions about. And then two is difficult as it is to bring up as a parent, security.
Absolutely. Tappe, Charlie, would you like to address any of those? Or Chris?
All right. So with the HVAC, we've, we have learned some lessons, but the, that directly kind of ties into the response of the energy efficient systems that we were talking about earlier. And it's part of that, just to lay a baseline, is that we are now focusing more on heat pump type systems that can kind of deal with energy in a different way than they used to. There's a lot of technicalities there that I'm not mentioning at the moment, but, so the current systems we've been finding most successful in when we, we have buildings that were in construction and are in construction during COVID. And there was all of that question marks about, well, we've got buildings that are antiquated and they can't open the windows, or the, the systems are pumping air from one room to the next, and gosh, can we get, you know, MERV 16 filters on everything and all of that kind of stuff, which I'm sure Winchester went through the same conversations as everybody else. And so what we've, what we've found is that these systems that we're actually specifying now for new buildings or renovated buildings actually respond very well to the things like pandemic response and stuff like that because of their ability to direct, direct exhaust air straight out of the building. It doesn't pull air from one room and tie it to the next one and all that stuff. So every room is directly exhausted and has fresh air coming to it that's not mixed from other rooms. And then the local control of the room has temperature setbacks that help control each room, so the temperature theoretically in every room could be different, plus or minus a certain range. And then, so that's kind of the sort of response to that, and also windows that open in classrooms. So you may not have them open too often, but there are nice days in New England, believe it or not. So there's some days that it actually makes sense to do that. And, and, you know, another pandemic or something comes along, we want you to be well set for, for those responses. And then security is a big priority for us, and we take that really in-depth approach of security. It's actually multi-layered nowadays, and the thing, one of the things that Tappe does, and if we showed more slides of some of our work, you probably see it a little bit in VO, but we like to talk about the way people use buildings in the sense of like, see where you're going, and then when you get there, see where you came from, and always have direct line of sight. That's the best way to have secure buildings is people's eyes on places in the building don't make places where people can hide. And then you supplement that with the electronic security systems and other strategies. And so we have security consultants that we bring on, there's a lot of programming that goes into that. And those will be sessions that you'll see coming forth and as the building evolves into like the preferred schematic and the schematic design layers. So I hope that helps answer that question.
I'm Susan Verdicchio on the Select Board. My children are all out of school now, but the community is very committed to our new climate action plan. And we really look to the, this new project as an opportunity to have a net zero school and not a school that the sustainability features kind of come in at the end of the process, but right at the very beginning. And we'd, we'd really be interested in hearing the design team talk about any experience they have with designing a, a net zero school.
Absolutely.
And then the, the second question on our minds is I, I understand that it's been decided not to have the central office be at Lynch, but I think the community would, would benefit from hearing again what, for example, the MSBA rules are and limitations are that made having the central office in the Lynch School not a preferable option? And also, you know, just from your own experience, again, why having the central office at the school is, is not a preferable option? Sort of the, the MSBA set of reasons and then just the Winchester School Committee and, and design teams, a set of reasons.
So there was three things. So first and foremost is the sustainability is your top priority.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that we note that, but I'll also allow for Mr. Nixon, who's more familiar with all of those, answering those questions. And for Tappe afterwards will come up. And we have some backup slides that demonstrate some of the projects that they have done that are, would address yours.
So it's a, thank you, Susan. So it's sort of a two, two-part response. I just wanted to address a little comment about process and then ask Charlie to speak on the design piece. We're joined tonight by Ken Pruitt, if you could rate, you know, want to wave. Ken is Winchester's new sustainability director. He's a Winchester resident, he's a town meeting member. He joined us this morning. Ken and town management supporting him are really eager for him to play a role in the project. Susan mentioned the Climate Action Plan, the 2020 Climate Action Plan. We specifically called that out in the RFP for both the project manager and the architectural team spoke to our commitment to the Climate Action Plan. Separately, we also mentioned the Massachusetts 2030 Decarbonization Plan. Institutional buildings are the second largest contributor to greenhouse gases in Massachusetts, I think right behind combustion engines. And so we, we aspire to meet a lot of the goals in that 2030 plan, even though, you know, Lynch would be open by the fall of '25. I'm going to ask Tappe to speak to- I'm going to ask Tape to speak to the design piece, but I also, and I can come back. I want to be sure I understood Susan had a question too, I think, about central office. I might ask Susan or you to repeat the question, but there are certainly some operational concerns that Dr. Hackett could speak to about having a central office at Lynch. Were you sort of looking to clarify why the Carriage House, not Lynch? Was that right?
Why Lynch is the less desirable option?
Ah.
The MSBA, or instead of the MSBA...
Sure.
...the structure is kind of, you know...
Okay. If it's, since that was your last question, we can come back to that. I'd love for Tape to speak to the sustainability piece if we can.
All right. So the net-zero question is one that we've been trying to wrestle to the ground with every district, I guess, in the last, it's really recently actually that people are grabbing on to that approach. The simple, I guess the best way for me to say it is that we can't have net zero if we don't have onsite generation. And so there's going to be a decision point that this project's going to have to make in terms of solar or geothermal or some way to, pardon the mic, some way to generate or offset the energy that is used because the building will use energy. One of the simple steps you'll probably see us recommend early on, just, I don't know many schools that are doing it differently nowadays, but is that you try to target an all-electric building so that we have the ability to not have any fossil fuels used in the building. And that gets you a long way down the road. So the thing that we do have control over that I try to talk to the clients about when it comes to net zero is that we need to set you up for truly being net zero in the sense that we have all of that solar thing, someone was talking about it earlier, have all of the solar planned out or thought about in advance. The town can go multiple different ways on how to address solar or geothermal. Geothermal needs to be probably part of the project. But if it's solar, you can do power purchase agreements. You can do all kinds of things to help offset the upfront cost and burden of that to the town and have the generation onsite still to make it go net zero. But the thing I want to really kind of focus in on here is that there's parts that we can take care of in design that are parts of the building that you may never see again for 60 years. And that's the envelope and insulation and how we structure windows and stuff like that. And our team is actually taking a really in-depth look on, if we increase the insulation by one inch here and do this on the outside and seal it a little bit better there, it adds, you know, X amount of dollars to the project, but the return on investment is this in terms of energy, and we actually model all of that. And so that's where I kind of will spend a lot of time during the design phases, is really tuning in those design models, those energy models. And like I said earlier, that really partnering with utilities on incentive programs, like the PATH1 Forever Source, that is, their whole system right now, PATH1 is targeting an EUI, that's the Energy Use Intensity, less than 25. And we do have two schools right now that are in that program and targeting the less than 25. And I think that generally speaking, that targeting of less than 25 is what the industry is kind of suggesting is the threshold for being able to make up the energy through renewable resources onsite to get to net zero. So that's what you'll see us do, and that's the process that we're going to take. I can't tell you right now all of the strategies that are applicable for this site on this building. And one of the other things is just making sure we have good site solar orientation so that we're not overheating the building in different ways. And so we challenged with that process, given the existing building onsite and how much room we have. But we'll definitely keep those in mind. All of those decisions actually do inform all of the conversation around swing space and stuff too. Because if you want a building that's properly solar-oriented, it may mean that we can't build it with more school in place, we have to pull something down. So it's all intertwined, right? So the goals of one party of getting net zero may inform the concerns of another party of swing space and kids and how they, not making them lose more in their education. So we're going to try to balance those as best we can.
Thank you, Chris. So I'll then try to tackle Susan's third question, which was about central office space in Lynch. So town meeting members were up very late last night talking about this very issue. So to back up, central office kind of has a history in Winchester of bouncing around from one building to another kind of on an opportunistic basis. Central Office moved into Parkhurst in 2013 when the Vincent Owen students left that building, which had been renovated for swing space so they could move into their new school. Central Office needed to move into Parkhurst because we were so desperate for space somewhere else. Even though we were building a much larger VO, we still needed more space. Central Office had been located at the Lynch Elementary School in former educational space. That pressure that was on us for them to move came from just an incredibly, just explosive rate of growth. In the decade from 2003 to 2012, statewide K-12 enrollment fell by 3%. This town's enrollment went up by 30, 3-0%. Since then, statewide K-12 continues to be flat, falling slightly. And we did continue to see some growth, thankfully not at that rate, which was just bananas. So we needed to get a spot very quickly for central office, and Parkhurst was available. But we also made a commitment to the town that we would look just as carefully at a permanent home for central office in our master plan, our tenure facilities master plan, as we would the many educational needs that we need in the district. And, you know, that would include the McCall expansion, a new Lynch, a new Morocco, and so forth. So after a very sort of careful, thorough process and looking at options like central office at Lynch, like Morocco, we even looked at Mystic. We also considered renting space somewhere, just on an ongoing basis for 20 years. Determined that moving to the Carriage House was really the most cost-effective way to go. That's a school committee building. It was built around 1908, at the same time as the Sanborn House. We're talking about the historic properties up on the Ambrose campus. So really in 2017, the school committee said, "That's our plan." And we did bring that back to town meeting. We didn't really ask for anything at the time, we just sort of said we made a decision. And then about a year and a half later, we did come back to this very room and we asked for some funding to develop a functional space program, similar to the one that you heard Vivian and Charlie describe tonight, to kind of document what the space needs would really be for central office now and into the future. And then similarly, to look at what would a schematic design look like to move central office to the Carriage House. You know, we said in the master plan that we felt that was the right way to go, but that's not a design. We needed to be really sure that it was going to work and that it was going to fit. So town meeting gave us that money. We completed that exercise ironically with Tape just a few months ago. And we feel like we have a good design solution. However, because that work, looking at the Carriage House, started a bit later than we had hoped, it really dovetailed with this eligibility and feasibility process for Lynch. We were quite confident, as Tape was doing their work on the Carriage House, that if we can build support in Winchester to build the new Lynch, and I'm very optimistic we will, as we've done in the past, this was a good time to actually take a careful look and see, is Lynch really an option for central office? Although we had voted against that back in 2017, now that we're going to be building a new elementary school, is that something that we should consider? The Tape team was actually here on September 9th, gave a very detailed presentation. You can even find it on the district website. Go to the school committee page, click on Special Projects, very detailed report and presentation. What Tape determined was that the construction cost between either going to the Carriage House or Lynch is essentially the same. It's between $4.1, $4.3 million. And on a project cost basis, it's about $6 million. School committee really wanted to get those numbers because if it was going to cost half as much to go to Lynch, we would really need to pause and think hard about that. But realizing that on a financial side, they're essentially equal, we had to consider some other issues. I want to share with you all that although the programming exercise has yet to sort of be undertaken, that will be submitted to the MSBA with the PDP. When they invited us into feasibility, it still was with some preconceived notions. The MSBA has already agreed that the new Lynch will house approximately 520 K-5 students. That's 100 more than what VO was designed for when it opened in 2013. So think about a considerably larger building. And in addition to this, a pre-K, integrated pre-K program, coming back to Lynch, at least 20% larger. So the building that we envision will be built will be at least 10 and could be 20% larger than the Lynch that we have today. Most likely, multi-story, given some of the constraints of the site. And I'm glad I see people nodding and appreciate we sort of understand that. So I think one of the elements of Susan's question that we want to underscore is, there is an operational and programming impact in bringing central office to a new Lynch. It would actually increase the size of that building by 9%. That's a lot on a very tight site where we have an existing school and we certainly have interest in minimizing disruption to students. If in fact we were to pursue a multi-story option at Lynch, let's say something similar for comparison to what we did at VO, three-story building built into a hill. If we were to take the central office program and put it on two floors, that's actually going to eat up 15% of the program on two of those three floors. Central Office would of course also be competing, if you would, for prime-time real estate. There are some things that I think we can all appreciate would be on the first floor of an elementary school. Main office, principal's office, cafeteria, gymnasium, and so forth. We can appreciate that if we wanted to go to central office, we wouldn't go to Lynch and then have to go up to the third floor to find central office. So there's going to be some really incredible push and pull associated with this. The MSBA, so first of all, central office was never in the program to begin with at Lynch, based on what was in the master plan. But we were careful to tell them when we issued the RFP, both for the OPM and for the architects, that we actually were looking hard at Lynch and we wanted them to tell us that that was okay. They said, "Okay, you can look at that, it's not in your program right now." Central Office is something that the MSBA does consider on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis. It's not reimbursable, but in some instances, they say no. What was also interesting to us is they were very clear that if the school committee should wish to send central office to Lynch as a part of this building, they would take that under advisement. And we would have to make a case that that is the best option for Winchester, and they would make a decision in September of '22. So here we are in November of '21. So you can imagine there'd be some real ramifications to sort of the design process to the building. So as Susan knows, I could go on on this for an hour because I feel like we've done so many presentations. But I mean, I would just say from a cost point of view, we looked at it. Operationally, we looked at it. And the school committee made the decision that they did. Vivian, to her credit, really pushed the school committee. We had to vote, we had to decide by October 1, right? So we had three public meetings and we voted on September 28th to go to the Carriage House. And we're very appreciative that last night, town meeting actually voted to support the school committee's article for some supplemental funding to take this design option we have at the Carriage House one step further into design development. That's not to build it, so we'll have to have a conversation in the spring about how we actually fund it moving forward. I thought we had a very robust and helpful, respectful conversation last night and really appreciate town meeting's support.
Any other feedback? What makes a successful project? Welcome.
My name is Karen Narenberg. I have three kids who are in fourth grade and first grade at Lynch and a recently relocated preschooler to Parkhurst. So I'm happy to hear that maybe they'll get to go back to Lynch. We will have missed it, but I think it was a nice community when everyone was there together. So some of my thoughts are more just things I want to throw out there. I think something that's really special about Lynch is really its connection, kind of mentioned to the outdoors and the accessibility that every classroom, almost every classroom, has to outside. There are very few internal classrooms in the building. If they are internal, most of them are on the courtyards, which are a really unique feature to Lynch that most other schools don't have. I see how they're not beneficial to construction and limiting footprints. But especially this past year, due to COVID, our kids have now moved to all the different entrances of the school. So they're using every bit of that footprint of the school building. So it really goes counter to your kind of security issues, but it's been something that's important that there is that accessibility to the whole school and not just to a central point where all the kids are funneling in. So I hope that's considered moving forward as, you know, things change. And a lot of schools were built to have a single or, you know, two primary entrances, and Lynch isn't, and it's worked out for us, and it's been beneficial. Also related to the courtyards, again, I don't think there's something that will be reconstructed, but the space that they offer, a kind of internal safe space in the school, the teachers use, the kids use at lunchtime, and it is really a flexible space that's outside. Weather doesn't hit it in the same way as it hits, you know, if it's really windy, it's not really windy in the courtyard. It's always a little warmer in there. So I kind of hope something like that is kind of integrated into the building. And my last comment is kind of related to traffic at Lynch, where, you know, as you know, it's located kind of in between two neighborhoods. So people come from both directions, which is beneficial to the school. There are a lot of walkers to school. I'd say significantly more than you'll see at Ambrose and VO, just based on its location. And working on both kind of the walking traffic and the vehicle traffic, I think is a really important piece to note, that kids are coming. And they're not just coming in the entrances, like we come through the woods behind the school. Kids come from lots of different directions. And making sure whatever traffic plan is put in place accounts for that. Accounts from all the ways the kids are coming, wherever the parking lots are laid out compared to the sidewalks. Noting that flow.
Thank you. So we are doing a traffic, we are initiating a traffic study, so that will definitely take into consideration. But I want to make sure I heard notions of traffic, connection to nature. Outdoor learning spaces are vital, as well as not just looking at car traffic, vehicular traffic, but also looking at pedestrian traffic. Great, thank you. Anyone else? Please, come forward. You came armed with a list, I love it.
Well, I vote no, so I don't forget.
Perfect.
So I am very excited about this project. I'm a longtime resident and have supported all my, all three of my now-adult children, attended Winchester Public Schools, and I've always been an advocate for projects like this. So everything that you've mentioned about the educational program and the experience for the students, A+. So I did want to underscore, very exciting, the idea of the connection to nature on this, in all our school buildings, but this one in particular speaks volumes to opportunities to integrate the building with the nature. And seeing that layout and where the water is and so forth, I just hadn't really thought about this location that way with the, yeah, I don't know to what degree the Horn Pond Brook can be somehow integrated into this. The experience of seeing the water, the girl doing her little experiment outside and seeing that map made me think there's something there. So it could be really an interestingly unique sort of educational space. And when I'm there now, I don't even know that's there. So also with the green building and to the earlier comment about the kids being able to learn from the construction happening, if you build green features into the building, I was picturing, you know, maybe if there's a solar, solar panels on the roof, could there be something on the wall of the building that they see how much heat is being generated from the solar panels? So that kind of thing. So this generation needs to learn how to live sustainably and to the extent that they can sort of see how this green building is green would be great. Separately, another aspect of sustainability, larger aspect of sustainability, now that I'm in my empty nester years, is sustainability for the community. And this isn't necessarily directed to you, it's partly directed to you, partly directed to the school committee and the MSBA, that we are a community that relies heavily on the residential tax base, as you probably know, doing your homework, to fund these projects. And we're really squeezed, and our taxes are very high, and our town meeting debates every allocation of every dollar very thoroughly so that we spend our taxpayer dollars as efficiently as we can. So in that spirit, I would love to see this project and all our school projects be thinking about community use. How can, of course, the students are the priority, but how could spaces in this building be designed to also invite the community to interact, intergenerationally perhaps in the learning experience, but also after hours, that the building be somehow usable for community meetings and so forth? So I share that, and I recollect, and this is for the MSBA, that that's not funded, reimbursed. reimbursed. I think that's a shame. So for the MSBA, I think that's a shame. We should be thinking about these projects that way as lifelong learning opportunities for our communities. So, but anyway, to the extent that that can be built into this, I would strongly encourage that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. First and foremost, it's a sustainable building, but beyond it being a sustainable building, you want a building that is also a tool. It's an education for the kids and for the new generation and this building itself becomes a learning opportunity. Third would be community spaces in order to have it open and inviting for not just the student population, but the entire Lynch community as a whole. Great, great. Thank you. Wonderful points.
I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader and I'm really excited about this project. I want to echo a couple of things that people have said and then I have a question. So definitely disruption is something that I'm concerned about for my kindergartner. My fourth grader will be out. And then the outdoor spaces really like, I didn't even think about it until this presentation, so I'm so glad that you mentioned it, but you know, we take our kids to playgrounds all the time. My son only wants to go to Lynch because he likes to play in the woods. You know, it's just, it's, it's great. That's what he loves about it and I would hate to see any of that go away. One thing that I love about Lynch that hasn't been mentioned, and I don't know how this gets incorporated into building a new Lynch, but it's, it's the most diverse school in our district and I think that's fantastic and we do a lot of like international night celebrations and things like that. And if there's a way to celebrate that kind of community, that would be great. And then my question is, you've talked a lot about feedback from the community. I was just wondering if you could talk through, what does that look like? What are the steps that we should be anticipating in the next couple of months to give you sort of more feedback and things like that?
So every step of the way, thank you for that. And before I kind of get, dive into what feedback we'd be giving to you guys, I want to make sure I still hear again, disruption, phasing, planning, and swing space was one concern as well as connection to nature and outdoor play. All right. But as far as the phasing goes and what we plan to, excuse me as I kind of go back and forth into the slide deck, but throughout the preliminary design program phase, the PDP, there isn't as much involvement as far as public. We want to first do a fact-finding exercise. First and foremost, we'll be looking at the building, the existing conditions, the traffic studies, what is the actual flow of traffic coming in, going out, kind of documenting all of the things that it already has existing. It is where during the preferred schematic report phase that we'll start gathering all that information that we've learned and now kind of putting it into what might work on the site. But throughout the steps, we'll be coming back to you and giving you the various options. This is a community project. Granted, it is a school project, but you are the school. You are the community that helps support the school. Your students and kids go to the school, so it is, in our mind, it is a big community project. And ultimately, you have to be the one to support it during town meeting and town vote. We need to take you through the journey. There are lots of do's and don'ts that the MSBA does have. We're more versed with that and how to navigate through those, but there are a lot of things that we need your support. It is a community decision as far as the sustainability concerns. We will also present the various options that we are finding for the new location on site, whether it is at the existing location footprint or adjacent to it, what the orientation will be, coming back to you, getting feedback on, is it well-received? Is it something that the community is not going to support? Is it something that we need to reconsider? Maybe a lot of some of our best learning opportunities for the project has come through public engagement, making sure that we present to you our findings, hear from you, what your reaction is, go back, refine the plans, fine-tune it and bring it back to you to make sure that we heard you. So those will be some of the various opportunities that we will have. There'll be more forthcoming as the project does progress, not as much during the beginning phases of the PDP as much, but definitely towards the PSR. Now we're looking at January, February is the PSR. So it might not be during Thanksgiving December, but January, February, we will start rolling, we'll have a little bit more plans developed in order to present. Tonight is our first opportunity to not only meet the public, to, for you to meet us as well and to hear what are some of your major concerns. In, in starting to plan, we take those concerns and considerations and make sure we're writing them down, but not just for the sake of writing them down, also to help guide us in our planning and our design. Yes?
I don't know. I lost it.
This was a great question. So I, a couple of thoughts. We packed the Vincent Owen Auditorium to show the parent community images like this during feasibility and the Lynch community will see, you know, this, this is up here in the presentation to give you an idea of the scope of options that would be sort of developed, also an idea of the detail. Each of these schemes are very different in terms of how one accesses the site, both by car, for pedestrians, impacts on parking, how it sort of presents to the neighborhood. And there were other options that TAPA developed as well. So this will not come up during the PDP, but certainly during the feasibility stage, a little bit later in the process as we work towards the preferred schematic. And the team from TAPA was sharing with us earlier today that one of the outcomes of COVID, I mean, we're all learning to sort of not just survive, but if we can thrive on Zoom. The TAPA team is actually finding Zoom is a good tool for, for this very thing. So we expect to be able to do that with the, the community virtually. We wanted to start today at Town Hall Auditorium and then end here at the high school because we really do see this as a townwide project, but really will pivot very quickly towards making an effort to just really engage with Lynch. We care especially a lot about what the Lynch community thinks. If there's an opportunity to do that in person, where we don't have to have masks and everybody's vaccinated, we'll, we'll certainly seize that opportunity.
How are you?
Good. How are you tonight?
Okay, to pull this down, to speak for me?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Deb DePeter. I was a Lynch parent for 11 years from 2009 to 2020. So my kids are older now. They're driving, they're looking at colleges, but, so they're not going to be affected by this project in terms of displacement and construction or the benefits of it, but I'm so thrilled that this is finally coming to fruition, thrilled for my neighbors and my friends and most importantly, the educators that my children benefited from in 11 years at Lynch. The physical environment at Lynch never matched the educational one. The building felt tired, but my kids' education never did. So I'm so excited at the prospect of their physical environment being elevated to the level of instruction and love and care that my kids received for 11 years at Lynch. So I want to 99% look forward to all the great things that people have said. I loved Brian's comments about, you know, looking at a successful project versus a successful school. I love the idea of this building being as green as possible. These are the vital conversations that we should be having as a community, but the 1% of me wants to actually look back a little bit. When, when we were, you know, living and, and studying in a school that was so old for so many years, I watched extraordinary efforts on the behalf of the administrators and the teachers and the parents to try to elevate the physical space at a time when we knew this building, a project like this wasn't, we weren't ready for it. We were focused on VO and the high school and whatnot and we knew our time would eventually come, but in the meantime, folks made some great efforts to try to help the kids see a physical environment that matched the educational one they were receiving. I think about Chris Kelly and other administrators who wrote grants to WIFI, to arts councils to bring in artists in residence to create murals and mosaics and installations that were really meaningful to the, to the kids and the, and the faculty. And I wonder if, and this is like item 999 after the first 998 that are more important, but I wonder if there's any way to preserve some of those, those projects that came about from some really extraordinary efforts mainly on the, on the part of the administrators and the teachers who, like I said, were delivering an exceptional education in a physical environment that wasn't quite there and they went above and beyond to try to bridge that gap a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, if I hear you correctly, it's more of some of the murals that are all along the building that I have definitely seen and noticed. We will work with the administration to look at how we could, there's so many different creative ways that we could address that and we'll definitely pursue some of the avenues for it. Thank you. Any other? Please. So maybe I could write down preserving some of the history of what made Lynch great.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Stacy. I have four kids. Two of them are currently at Lynch, one's at McCall, one's at the high school. The new Lynch has been a thing since my oldest was a fourth grader. He's going to graduate four months before the new Lynch actually opens. So we're really excited that it's, you know, finally coming and to fruition, even though my youngest will also be gone at that time. I'm happy that you're hosting this tonight and that you're asking for public comment. I wasn't prepared for that. I was, I thought it was an informational session, so I was just kind of jotting some things down through your slideshow and through the other speakers, so we're really scrappy at Lynch. We had to be as some of the other audience members have said, you know, when you don't have much, you, you make it into something. So the teachers and the students and the parents have been just so involved at Lynch and some of the things like Deb was saying that we've created there would be great to maintain in addition to the, the things that she mentioned. The Zen Garden was a courtyard that was kind of in major disrepair. We wrote a grant to WIFI. Parents donated a ton of time and money and with the teachers' help, created this really amazing inclusive space that the kids use all day, that they can use as a, like a quiet recess space that the teachers use for teaching. One of the teachers there had years ago created an actual garden and so the teach, the students come out and they grow tomatoes and pumpkins and things and then sometimes some of the classes, like the fifth grade class would then sell their herbs as a fundraiser and things like that. So things like that would be great to maintain within the, the new Lynch. The weather station that one of the teachers got a grant for and is on the roof of the current Lynch, you know, to maintain that somehow would be great. And then building on things that we've had to create and making them better. So our current makerspace is a closet of the art room that the previous art teacher had donated to the school so that we could have a, a makerspace, but to have an actual current, you know, with technology and, you know, equipment and things like that, to have a more usable, user-friendly makerspace. Also the parent involvement, in, in addition to being one of the, the largest, like diverse school that we, in Winchester, the parent involvement is also one of the highest of the elementary schools. So the events that we do, I mean, we, we host about 30 events a year that I can think of off the top of my head. And so to find out what those are and see how we can build a school that would be able to, that as we're doing these events, that it would work within the, the new construction of the school. And what else? Some of it's kind of infrastructure stuff. I'd love to see unisex bathrooms. I'd like to see some form of AC, whether it's just how you build the building so that the walls are cooler or the, if, you know, you're doing a green roof and so that helps bring the cooling down. It doesn't have to be actual air conditioning HVAC system, but the schools are used year round, so, you know, we know that in September it's really hot, we know in June it's really hot, but teaching there in the summer or having your kids go there when there's no ventilation and 87 degrees in a classroom with the windows that don't open, so having, having it cool year round would be amazing. And then also, as we've seen with some of the other schools, as we've built them after it opens, it's already too small for the enrollment that we have. If there was some way to make them a little bit more modular, so, you know, a space that, like the high school where you can, you know, open a, a wall to make a space as big as two classrooms or something like that. And last couple were, oh, that because it's a community building and everybody in town has the right to use all of our schools for things, to keep, to keep that in mind as well. You know, our fields are, we're one of the only elementary schools that get used as fields for sports events and so our parking lot as it is, you know, with arrows on the ground, nobody follows them anyway and so, and you can't really get in and out through that one little entrance, but knowing that it's going to be used, you know, in the weekends and in the summer for summer camp, for, for soccer games and for all the extracurricular stuff that if the, the fields and the parking could be incorporated in it as well. And then finally, just the playground, having been one of the recipients of a broken arm for the way our playground is currently structured and seeing what's been done at VO and Ambrose with the rubber matting and stuff like that, just to be thinking of, you know, all of the spaces and not just the inside spaces.
All right. Don't go anywhere because you gave me way more food for thought. So I want to make sure that we document some of this so that we definitely take it into consideration. So it was sustainability. It was definitely outdoor play areas and not only outdoor play, but connection to nature with the Zen Garden and just bringing in the gardening areas as well. I've seen that Zen Garden. It is beautiful. Another item that you did mention was partially sustainable, but making sure that the building is well-ventilated as well. Another item was traffic concerns and the traffic patterning on how it comes in and out, since this is a community space used year round for community, not just for a administration school building, as well as having that connection and openness to the community to utilize. I feel like I'm missing one more. So playground, I, I think I kind of said that as far as like the community space playground, but definitely using more of a defined playground space for the kids with a consideration for the materials for rough play. Okay. Anything else?
And also unisex bathrooms.
Oh, the unisex bathrooms.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Richard Dunne U. I live on Brantwood Road, right behind the school. One thing that hasn't, or the previous speaker just mentioned, is parking. Parking is a huge issue around Lynch. Also living on Brantwood Road, all the teachers park there as well and when there's an event, you can't even get up and down our street. So at some point, that issue needs to be dealt with. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Parking, definitely one that needs to be addressed. Anybody else? Go the other way. So that way you're staring at Lynch and not...
You're not side-eyed.
That's what I'm trying to have. One way or another, right? One more. There we go. Well, this won't be your last opportunity to share any feedback or comments. We're definitely looking forward to invite you back and be part of the process. And as Mr. Nixon alluded to, we will be having a website dedicated for the Lynch project as well as an email address that I'm sure once it's formalized will be shared with everyone and how to submit questions, comments, or access the website for any additional information that you might have. Sure? Please?
Thank you, Vivian. So the, the group this morning was just interested to see what we did for the McCall project, so this is really just intended to give you an idea. This side is still live. Whoop, I lost it. What happened here? I think I bumped a cable, did I? I bumped the cable, did I?
There we go.
Sorry about that. This website is still live today. If you wanted to learn more about the McCall project, just Google Winchester McCall Expansion Project and, and you'll find it. So this is very similar to, you know, what we, what we will do for the Lynch project. So we had some simple background information on why the expansion at McCall was important, what are the phases, the what and the where. These diagrams lifted right out of our tenure facilities master plan. And, and we'll start there, you know, sort of at a skeletal level with Lynch, given the basic information that we have. We have, you know, a very basic project scheduled. We'll take some of the information from Hill and from TAPE that you saw tonight, and we'll load that onto the site as well. And let me see here. We had some information on, we did have a page on traffic and safety. We will do that as well for Lynch. Once we understand more about the costs that will really come when we get to the PSR stage, we'll begin to share more of that information with you as well. To remind you all, the, we submit the PSR, the board is going to be voting in April, I think that's right. And then, once they vote our preferred schematic, that's still a very, one might say, sort of a conceptual plan. The team will then take the preferred schematic that the MSBA board votes to accept, and then they take that into a much more sort of refined and defined stage of design. And that will be then the basis for the cost estimate, coming back to town meeting in the fall a year from now, and then the debt exclusion override. But most importantly, also wanted to let you know, we, we set up a email for the McCall project. We'll do that for Lynch. We had an FAQ page. Any question you want to ask, you send it in. On a pretty regular basis, we'll be reviewing that and we'll be posting it up online. And we'll push this out through Twitter or Facebook. Deb DePeter, who just spoke a moment ago, is with us on the communications group. I appreciate that very much. Tom Hopcroft is as well. Lisa Matrandola is a member of our Disability Access Commission and EFPBC member. She's joining us, as well as the superintendent and some of our other team members. So we look forward to putting this together and hearing what questions you have. As Vivian said, I think maybe through School Messenger or something in the next week or two, you can expect to get some more information about where you can go for sort of central repository for information. Thank you all for coming. Any other questions?
Thank you.
So Mr. Mardone, how about you call for a motion to adjourn? I'll do the minutes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.